Still not on.
We're on now.
Okay.
I apologize. Technical difficulties in the back. That was not my fault. Just saying. Mayor, we have a couple of items on our work session for tonight. We'll get started. We started a little earlier because we have two of those. The first item that we had on our agenda for tonight was a follow-up discussion for the neighborhood at Bowie Park. The second item we have on our work session agenda is a discussion of mixed street, Main Street, mixed-use zoning for property other than the neighborhood that will be discussed. And I know there's going to take some time to get into that discussion. I believe we'll have time for both. We may finish up a little early. With that, the purpose for the work session tonight, or one of the stated purposes, was for the BOC to follow up and gather information, communicate some with the developer of the proposed neighborhood at Bowie Park. I believe that name has changed or in the process of changing, but that's the name as we know it. I'm sure there's been some communication there. I know the developer and representatives from that development are here tonight. I believe also a member of the Groves family, the owner of the property, is here or will be here. So with that, I would simply open up the floor to you, Mayor, members of the board, for discussions of that matter. I'll also remind everyone in attendance tonight that the work session, stated purpose of the work session was for communication with the board and the developers so the board could learn more about the subdivision. I know there were some proposed changes that were questioned, that that information needed to be gathered. The first reading of this item is on tonight's BOC agenda. If that first reading were to pass tonight, then there would be a second reading, and at that second reading, there's a public hearing. And at that public hearing, it is specifically for the purpose of public involvement with that, as we've discussed before. So if there isn't time tonight, or the circumstances just don't provide for public communications back and forth, just so everyone will be aware, the purpose of tonight is a work session to gather additional information about the subdivision. And should it go to a public hearing, then there will be an enhanced time for public comment at the public hearing. So just so everyone knows, in the interest of time and process where we are. So having said all of that, I would simply open up the meeting to you, Mayor, members of the commission, for any questions, comments, concerns ahead, or inquiries of the developers themselves. I know that there were some changes from the original submission to what will be considered by the board. I know there were questions about that. I believe they have a presentation to make that will answer some of those questions. I don't want to speak for the developer. They certainly can. But I think that's where we are, as we picked up from the last work session, was to follow up on those questions and have them present more information about their proposed changes. So with that, I will turn that over, the meeting over to you, Mayor, members of the board, and allow that follow-up if it's your pleasure.
Okay. So just to clarify, this is a meeting for the developers and the BOC, and public hearing comments will be made. If the first reading passes, there'll be a public hearing for the community to speak at that point in time?
Yeah, absolutely. That's correct.
So just to clarify. Okay, good. So I'll let the developers take the floor and show us what you've done. Thank you.
Good evening. We appreciate your opportunity.
Yeah, not really. I think it's on, but I don't think it's very loud. No.
Michael, he'll catch up in some point tonight. Kind of busy in the room back there. We'll get it, make sure that it's up and running.
I was trying to talk about all that. So again, thank you for allowing us to come back tonight. We've taken a lot of comments, meeting the leader, feedback from the important commissioners, feedback from the staff, the residents, all that. Still all that is best of the year.
I still can't hear.
I'm sorry.
Is that better?
That's better. Why don't you just, yes, I mean, can we, and still have him to stoop over to the table? Can we get him a seat?
I apologize for the...
It's okay. It's all your fault.
We'll make it work. So anyways, I thank you again for letting us come back. And, you know, we've heard a lot of feedback, a lot of comments. Oh, thank you. And really, just want to take a few minutes, and we've given staff in the back an updated PowerPoint, want to really walk you through all the different changes, all the different things that we've looked at. We heard the feedback about lot sizes and overall density impacts, buffers and edge treatments, things of that nature, as well as some of the drainage concerns and things like that. So are we...
You may have to act it out. It might not be working at all. So you...
I'll step back. I know Mike is working on that. We had a little bit of difficulty with the system just a minute ago. We'll make sure. If you guys want to just proceed with any questions, we'll make sure we get it pulled up.
Well, maybe while we're waiting for that to get pulled up, if you all have specific questions, and maybe want to go ahead and ask those, we probably would have addressed them in the PowerPoint, but we can go ahead and start talking, and when that comes up, we can just kind of work through it, if that's okay.
So why don't you tell us what you've changed?
All right. So the big changes that we made are on all of the lots that are bordering the Cox Run neighborhood. We went back and revised that whole edge of the plan. And so we made all of those lots half-acre lots. So we made the sizes bigger and have maintained that all the way around there. And some of the conversations that I've had with some of the residents out there, and some of the feedback that, you know, the board and the staff have shared with us, there was definitely, you know, we have a buffer labeled on the plan, but there was concern like, what does that actually feel like? And so in the conversations that I've had, it felt like the preferred option is if you're on the Cox Run side and you're looking at this buffer, that, you know, you want to see the vegetation, and then if there is a privacy fence, that's on the backside of the new houses in the other neighborhood. So you would have this landscape buffer, and then in, on the edge of that lot, of the new construction house on the other side, if they elected to do a fence, that would be, where the fence would be. And there was some back and forth about like, you know, if you're looking out your back porch, looking out the window, you know, what, what does that look like? Do you want to see a fence right there, and then maybe just above that, a little bit of the green, or would you rather just see all of the green of the buffer, and then potentially a fence behind that? So what we're proposing is really essentially two different edge treatments. So along Cox Run, there's, you know, a natural treatment with the potentially for fences, you know, on the inside of the new lot. And then we're still proposing a 35-foot equivalent buffer along the lower edge of the lots against Bowie Park with the four-rail horse fence to really kind of set a different architectural aesthetic between the border against the park versus the border against Park, I'm sorry, Cox Run. And I tell you what, since it looks like we're up and running, I think I'll let Jay run kind of with the PowerPoint now, if that's okay.
Let me see if, all right, good. It's close enough. Y'all can hear me. All right. Again, I'm Jay Easter with Reagan Smith. We've got the rest of the team here as well, our traffic engineer, senior civil engineer, and then Dave McGowan and his team from the home building side. So let me start running through. One of the first changes you'll see is we are now referring to this as the Groves property, not referring to it as the neighborhood of Bowie Park. Let's see.
We just thought it was up and running.
Mike, we're just going to have to get you to follow along and scroll as we go. I apologize for the inconvenience. We're really having some difficulty with our room back there, so.
Micah, can you go to the next one? All right. So the magnifying works. Okay. Let's see. The neighborhood is located here. This is a slide out of the Fairview Comprehensive Plan 2040 Plan, where the property is designated for a new medium-density residential neighborhood. Micah, can you go to the next slide? This is another slide out of the, oops, I may have control now. I do. This is another slide out of the 2040 Plan that lists the different types of neighborhood, the different appropriate densities within those types of neighborhood that the 2040 Plan feels is appropriate for the site. Now, we are proposing what I would consider a conventional plan unit development, or plant, planned overlay district on this site. And the comp plan designates a planned overlay district and allows for a mixture of housing and up to four units per acre. We are currently proposing 1.5 units per acre with the revised plan. This is also a slide from the Fairview Comp Plan, and the reason I brought it into the presentation is because there is a Greenway connection that lines up almost exactly with our main entrance drive and terminates and connects to Bowie Park, exactly where we have the proposed trailhead and connection into Bowie Park. So those are two elements within the comp plan that we are in complete compliance with and helping the town implement. Now, we are, the property is currently zoned R40, and we are proposing an R20 POD, which is in compliance with the comp plan. We went back and modified our existing conditions map and added some additional elements to help explain the existing site to everyone, and so, and also so we could walk through the current drainage patterns on the site. Currently, there's a ridge on the site that runs right through here, and there's a high point right behind this home at the corner in Cox Run, and then bisects the site this way. We hit another high point, and the ridge continues on off the property. The other black dash lines are the other ridges that help delineate the different drainage basins. From this portion of our site, there's approximately, in the undeveloped condition, two acres that drains towards Cox Run. From this half of this ridge, there's approximately four and a half acres that drain towards the existing drainage, the existing drainage way here and towards Cox Run. So the total of our site, there is approximately six and a half acres that currently in undeveloped state drains towards Cox Run. The rest of the site drains into our site and into the different drainage, drainage ways that are currently existing on the site. Now, if you look at, this is a slide from the Williamson County GIS that shows the Cox Run development and our undeveloped site. This blue area up here is the studied floodplain that is identified on the Williamson County GIS site, as well as the blue line stream that continues on into Cox Run and terminates right about here. That is a stream that in our condition, under the current development patterns, we have to buffer, we have to stay off of, and we cannot develop on. At the time Cox Run was developed, it was under different rules, and that did not happen. The drainage, the 100-year floodplain is studied up until this point. It is unstudied back this way. There's a base elevation set here, and all of that blue area is, is within the 100-year floodplain. Now, if I go to the next slide, it's a little bit, a little bit more of a blow-up of what's going on, but you can see the blue line stream, and I'm going to assume pre-development, continued into Cox Run this way. The current Cox Run drainage pattern, there's another swell or drainage way that comes in from this side. All of along goes, I think, under the, under the road here. It's open ditch here. It comes through here, goes into, comes out of a head wall into an open ditch, then back in, and then goes across this yard. And that's the way the current water draining. So the majority of what's coming from this side is coming from another site. Then there is water, because the hill runs down this way, that's coming down these, these roads into Cox Run drainage system, and it all ends up into the same drainage way over here. All right. This was the originally submitted plan that we, that we submitted to the planning commission. That, I can't read that far. 179 lots, two estate lots, open space, and had a density of 1.63 units per acre. This is the revised plan after it went to planning commission, and we had some input from the adjacent neighbors. The changes consisted of dropping the estate lots from this area, modification of the entrance drive, enhanced screening and buffering at the main entrance, additional fencing along the adjacent property owners at the main entrance, and then adjustments to the Bowie Park buffer, where we agreed to incorporate the riparian planting and what, and, and the fence along the property line. This plan, we reduced lots down, and we had a, I think it's 1.62 units per acre. Now, this is the, this is the revised plan. This is before you tonight, after our last public work session with the Board of Commissioners and the neighbors, we've gone back. Now bear with me. We have increased the size of all the lots adjacent to Cox Run. They are now 20,000 square feet or greater. We've increased the lots along the Bowie Park boundary, and those are all now 20,000 square feet or greater. We originally had a detention pond located behind these homes. We relocated so we could ensure that all the drainage would be, when we grade these lots, is going into the system, and it will eventually end up in our drainage pond, and then be released into the drainage way. We will not be directing drainage back towards Cox Run from this area. These homes will be graded, and the, and will be sloped so that they drain into our drainage system, make their way to these detention ponds, and then be released into the existing drainage ways that flow away from the site. We also increased the front yard setbacks to 25 feet. We also increased the rear yard setbacks to 20 feet. We, later on in the presentation, we've provided some additional driveway configurations to better explain how the driveways within the neighborhood and home configuration for work. We've committed to a 250-per-lot contribution paid to Bowie Park at the time of plating that will total $41,500. The density of this plan is, is 1.5 units per acre, which is less dense than Cox Run. It has over 46 acres of open space, and it has 166 proposed lots. This is a slide that helps explain the distribution of the lots. Again, all of the, the lots that are this color are 20,000 square feet or greater. You can see them bordering Cox Run. You can see them along the edge of Bowie Park. There's a couple at the back end of these cul-de-sacs. The light yellow lots are our typical lot, which is 10,000 square feet. But we have four different ranges of lot sizes within the neighborhood that range from 10,000 square feet to 10,000 to 14,000 square feet, 15,000 square feet, to just shy of 20, and then 20,000 square feet or greater. Oops. Let's see if I can back up. Okay. All right. This shows a driveway configuration and a lot that could potentially be bordering Bowie Park. There's a, an additional 10-foot landscape easement imposed on this lot, where evergreen plant material will be planted to help buffer the park. It has a 20-foot rear yard setback. It has a 25-foot front yard setback. It could have a hook-in garage. If this configuration is wide enough, it could also have a drive-by garage, like we're showing on the other, on the deeper lots that back up to Cox Run. So any of those configurations will work on our larger lots. I'm going to back up one slide if I'm good enough. Here we go. This is the typical 10,000-square-foot lot. It had, it has the potential to have hook-in garages like this. It can have a drive-by garage that's shown here on a corner. So in this situation, we would typically access the garage off of this way. But this lot could very easily fit between these two, and it would have a drive, a drive-by garage that hooked into the back. These are the same home styles that we presented last time. Those have not changed. Mr. McGowan's here if later on, if the commission has any questions about the homes or the home architecture. But it's my understanding these would all be very similar to the Otter Creek homes that, that they're currently building within the town. This is the repetitive slide about the Bowie Park buffer. Originally, we had the 25-foot buffer that, where we were preserving existing plant material and supplementing with evergreen plant material. Since then, we've added the 4-foot black rail fence. We committed to the additional 10-foot on the backyard. So the 10-foot plus the 25-foot riparian buffer totals a 35-foot buffer in between the park and the neighborhood. This is a slide that helps discuss the buffer along Cox Run that Dan spoke about earlier. He went into pretty good detail. So it would be evergreen plant material planted in between our proposed neighborhood, the existing Cox Run neighborhood, and the potential privacy fence along the back of the lot lines of the proposed lots. All right. This is our trailhead and, and the connect, proposed connection to Bowie Park. Since the revised plan, we've added a playground area to be added to the neighborhood. We still have the pavilion, the grills, the bench, the seating, the bike racks. We're also going to maintain some open play area and a proposed dog park just behind the mail kiosk. And again, this connection is almost exactly where the comp plan shows the connection into Bowie Park, in the potential Greenway connection. We did change the proposed pavilion. This is, oops, I'm sorry. Mr. McGowan provided a photo of a pavilion in the neighborhood. They built similar, more recently, and so this would be the type of pavilion we would be seeing within this neighborhood. These were examples of the bike rail, the benches, the trash receptacles, the bike fence, same images that were permitted, presented to the commission earlier. Now, this is more of a lifestyle photo showing the neighborhood where kids will be walking on sidewalk, playing in the playgrounds, accessing the trail system. But it's more of a, I guess, a more modern neighborhood and lifestyle, where there are sidewalks, there are playgrounds, there are amenities built into this package. This shows the neighborhood in relation to the perimeter trail and where our proposed connection is to Bowie Park. Now, these are the traffic improvement slides that we reviewed last time. I have Tiffany here to answer any questions if the commission has any questions. But these were the improvements that the track, traffic study showed that were warranted and that we worked through with staff. I'm not going to go into great detail with them unless the commission has questions for me, and I can bring the traffic engineer up. And that's the end of it. These is, we're happy to answer your questions and elaborate on any item that I've discussed.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Other developers?
Mayor, I've got a question. When it comes to traffic, you know, a large concern that Cox Run subdivision has is the amount of traffic that's going to be coming through their subdivision, which I completely understand. Can you talk through the extra traffic that Cox Run is going to see coming down that Main Thoroughfare with the total percentage, for example, of how much is going to be coming down Cox Run?
I cannot talk in great deal to it, but my traffic engineer can come up here, and she can.
There we go.
Hello. My name's Tiffany Giannano. I'm the traffic engineer at Reagan Smith. I did the traffic impact study. So we estimated the traffic that will be generated by the development using the Institute of Transportation Engineers 10th Edition. We're estimating in the PM peak, we'll have about 180 trips. That's entering and exiting. We also, we will have two access points, as we previously discussed. We'll have the Wayne's Lane access, and we'll have this Cox Run access. So my distribution for this site, based on where the lots are located...
Can you pull, can you pull that up for us? Just a overview of the subdivision?
Which way is it? Sorry.
He said practice by now.
There you go. So at the top there is Wayne's Lane.
Yes.
And then to the right is Cox Run. Okay.
So based off of where our lots are located, I estimated that 65% will be using the Wayne's Lane, and about 35% will be using Cox Run. This is an estimate. This is how we do our traffic studies. We look at the distribution of where the lots are and try to estimate how people will be using the access points.
How do you come up with that as an engineer? Is that a formula? Is that, how do we, how do we get there?
It's an estimate. It's, I mean, there's no real way to know which way each person will be going. But looking at how the lots are laid out, if you're in that back corner, I don't see you going up to Cox Run and going through that access. Do they have the ability? Yes. But this is our best estimate of what our traffic will be doing, especially with the monument that we have at Wayne's Lane. That seems like more of a main access point that 65%, the more majority will be using.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Easter, or Mr. Allen, one of the biggest things we keep hearing is, and you guys kind of had that topography map, which was good to see some of the ridge lines, but like the properties, if you come right off of Cox Run Lane, you take a right, all those right now slope significantly right back to Cox Run. And so are you literally saying you will cut those lots down 15, 20 feet in order to make them come back to the road to, to enter your drainage inside? Is that what? Because right now, there'd be a huge topography difference. Like, if you just cut in a road on that field, it would all, still, the natural flow would fall back. And so just trying to understand, because you said you would control it where your drainage would all come back down into your roads, to your designed drainage. Is that a huge topography cut? Is there a shear wall with that? Is that, you know, how does that look?
We haven't done the full design on it yet, but we expect to do some pretty significant grading to make those fall back from back to front.
Okay.
............................................................
Okay. Wait, wait, we can hear you.
I was gonna say, I'll, I'll repeat it.
Okay, you repeat.
What Mr. McGowan was saying is that we'll, we'll put together...
What Mr. McGowan was saying is that we'll put together, if we're given approval when we move forward to the next step, once we have entitlements and rezoning in place, the next step is the engineering. We'll prepare a very detailed mass grading plan that shows how the whole site is going to be graded and flesh out all of these things to a full engineering standard.
Typically, when we give the orders to the engineer, what we want to do is collect all water we can and take it to a stormwater control device and a water quality, we call it in our business. And so basically, when we grade the roads and we grade the lots and we do the fill and the cut. So we, in some cases, we cut the dirt, in some cases, we fill the dirt. We try to get it to where that water will go back to a storm structure, which is usually in the road like a pipe. And that, then we take that water back to a water quality pond, treat that water before we release it in a very timely manner.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I have one more. So when it comes to the border of Bowie Park, can you talk me through, once again, what that border is exactly going to look like? So there's going to be a fence, there's going to be some type of vegetation, trees? Kind of discuss with me just a little bit more what that's going to look like.
I meant to have some pictures for you. We developed a community called Sherwood Green on, in Nolan'sville. It was right across the street from the mayor's house. And we had an issue very similar to this, where they did not want to be able to see the houses. So we built a series of berms and landscaped it very heavy with evergreen trees. And behind that was actually a fence that we agreed to stain it a cedar color. So you don't actually look in the backyard of the fences itself. The subdivision is about three years old now. We just finished the last section of it. But we can get you pictures of what that looked like. A landscape planner actually designs it and specifies it. We actually give you that plan of the species, there were trees that we're going to plant on there. We will actually bond that particular easement and assure you, and you can actually have an inspector come out and inspect to see that we actually did plant the trees and that they have lived. And so we actually just got finished with getting the bonds released on that subdivision and where we planted a very large landscape buffer along the Rocky Fork Road in order to shield the property across the street from the neighborhood that we built. And so I think that all things being considered, you think about the setback on the houses as well? The setback in that particular area, do you remember what it is? I'd say it minimum is 20 feet, but the odds are we'll have a 40-foot backyard. So the back of the house probably will not start until 40 feet from the lot line itself. And so then you'll have that particular buffer. What's the exact dimension on the buffer?
25 feet for the buffer plus an additional 10 feet up into the yard that's maintained by the HOA, so 35 total.
35-foot buffer. So you imagine, we can build a berm, we can plant trees on top of that berm and really create a very distinctive, you know, it'll benefit the park as well as the homeowner and keep them both private.
Any other questions? Mr. Butler, you look poised to ask a question.
Well, one thing we talked about was the greenway. The document with the comp plan talks about the greenway. I know we have this trailhead connection, but I would love to see some kind of mobility connection to where it could connect to the next parcel or the next parcel, kind of where we start a future greenway instead of missing out on the opportunity. So you could come out of that trail and you could take the sidewalks, but if you have a bike path or, you know, a 10-foot path or something coming down that side. And we've had, the Land Trust Tennessee sent us a note of 100-foot buffer on the park. We, I've tried to read about buffers. I'm still just having a hard time analyzing that park buffer on that corner side. I've seen the Sherwood Green buffer. It is a huge buffer that you can hardly see the neighborhood from, from the road. I'm still just trying to envision, do we have that room to capture a look like that?
Anything else, commissioners? Vice Mayor, questions?
All the questions I've had have been answered by this presentation, which I appreciate y'all putting together.
Mr. Lucas?
I only have one question. Just walk me through, I know we talked about the drainage issue going into the Cox Run subdivision. Talk a little bit about what will be done to minimize that water drainage going into Bowie.
Basically, any water that we generate on the site, we're required to control that water and treat it underneath the current TDEC rules. And so we don't normally run water. In Tennessee, it's called a friendly water state. You are allowed to run it in its natural course. But at the same time, when we develop property, we have to be able to control that water. So in any neighborhood we do, we usually do a cut and fill. We're not a ridge-top developer. As developers who just cut the top of the ridge and put basement homes on either side, we don't really develop that way. If you go on our subdivision, we typically will go in there and grade that lot to where we step it down the street and so the lots will be on certain sides. And these are very large lots. And so you imagine, it was very easy for us to put a drainage area between the two lots and divert the water to the street to where it can go back into a catch basin and then at such time go down into the stormwater. So we cannot, we'll have to do calculations through our engineer that they actually design it to where we release that water so where we do not cause any flooding downstream whatsoever.
Anything else?
Do you guys have a, an active 10,000-square-foot neighborhood with 25-foot setback with similar builds going on with this product right now?
We do. We are in Murfreesboro with a neighborhood called The Preserve. Lots are very similar. The same identical model home that's over in Otter Creek is in that neighborhood as a model home. And all the homes there, we committed to doing courtyard or hook-in driveways as well as side entry driveways. And that neighborhood right now is selling in the mid-500s. We anticipate this neighborhood to be the same way and probably go up to the 600s. And so we do do a lot of farmhouse-style designs, because that's very popular right now. But we also do a lot of homes that are basically 90% to 100% brick. And so the customer in this price point here usually is a second, third-time buyer. And, and they have a lot of wants that they want. So in regards to the homes, I think that, we had some photographs of it and CDs in here that we submitted earlier. But some of the larger lots, there'll be quite a distance between the two homes. So that, they'll be very, they're what we call executive family homes. So this property is within 45-minute commute to 35 to 45-minute commute back to major employment centers such as Franklin and even back over toward the Cool Springs area. And so we see those being major employment centers that people will go back to. Some will go back over to Nashville. We already have buyers who live in Bowie, Otter Creek, that are going back into Nashville that work out here. And of course, nowadays, a lot of people can work remote. And so one of the things we see is that we used to have a house designed with a study, which was a home office. Nowadays, we got requests that we have two of those. And so the people are working using Zoom and all the other go-to-meeting-type scenarios. And so the homes that we're designing now will have a minimum of probably one home office, a study, and it will probably end up having two. The other thing that we also provide now that's high demand is what we call an in-law suite. People are not putting their home, their family into nursing homes right now. And we get a lot of requests where someone moving into town, they might want to be able to have a separate suite with its own little living area, a little bit of kitchen, and a place even possibly for a washer and dryer that they could have. So we actually designed a series of homes that we're just now starting to build that are designed strictly for the senior to be able to come back and live with the family. And we see that home probably being built out here as well.
Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners?
I would like to say one thing. This week, I've heard all the expressions of, you know, concern about the water runoff. So I spoke with some representatives from TDEC and an organization called the Middle Tennessee Erosion Control. They monitor, we have a subdivision being built right now. Talked to the developer of that subdivision. And they are visited weekly to make sure that the runoff is not imposing issues on the neighboring subdivisions and areas. That's one of my major concerns. So when I spoke with them, I felt a lot more comforted that they oversee this and quite adamantly. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll move to our second item on our workshop agenda. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for making the changes and we'll see you soon, I'm sure.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Collins, you want to explain our proposed changes?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission. The next item you have on your work session tonight relates to the Main Street Mixed Use zoning district. You may recall that there is a proposal or request for rezoning the property in front, or not in front of City Hall, but the parcel between Hardee's and First Bank. That parcel is currently zoned Main Street Mixed Use or is a Main Street Mixed Use district. And I have provided you, I sent earlier in the week a copy of that document for that zoning and what's allowed or not. But I've also provided you with a paper copy of what that, what that is. One of the questions that had been brought out specifically regarding this site, and there are really two. The first question regarding the site is actually its usability. If we're talking about the footprint of the parcel that we're talking about between Hardee's and First Bank. One of the, where the biggest difficulty with that site is its accessibility. There's no access directly from Highway 100 to that site where you would turn in there off of the turn lane. So the only access, and this is a granted easement, is the drive lane through the backside of Hardee's Restaurant. So if you turn off of Highway 100, you don't take the immediate turn into Hardee's, but you take the second turn. It gives the appearance that you're turning into Hardee's to make the loop to go around to the drive-through and then you make the loop to come back out. But if you pull into Hardee's at that back exit, you will notice that there are two arrows. There's an arrow that directs you into the Hardee's parking lot and there's an arrow that directs you out of the Hardee's parking lot. Those two arrows also exist on the other side of the parking lot and there's a stub street going from Hardee's to this vacant parcel. The reason I tell you that is, is because with that limited access, there are very few businesses that could circulate traffic effectively on that site. If your primary, if not in fact only entrance and exit is through the Hardee's parking lot, then with that choke point, you need to be able to circulate your traffic on that site so that it could drive in using that site, make the loop and drive back out using the same, the same location. Basically cross-traffic through, through the back of Hardee's parking lot.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So basically, you would have four lanes of, I mean, you'd have people that had parked at Hardee's and coming out and coming out that upper driveway? Plus you'd have the drive-through, plus people coming and going to the car wash?
You'd have, you'd have a minimum of three lanes. If you, if you're sitting in the, if you're sitting at the back of the Hardee's Restaurant...
At the drive-through, let's say.
You're going to have three lanes. Lane number one is the car in the drive-through.
Okay.
That's sitting at the drive-through making an order. Lane number two would be the middle lane of the three and it will be going against traffic at the drive-through, crossing the back of Hardee's to get through to this parcel, in this case, the car wash if that were to be approved. The third lane of traffic would be leaving the car wash site, also in the Hardee's drive lane.
But if I've parked in front of Hardee's and I'm wanting to leave, I would have to back out and cross...
You're going to have to, you're going to have to, you're going to have to navigate traffic in the Hardee's parking lot if there's a car leaving the car wash, if that makes sense?
Or...
Either way, yes. So if you, if you circle around Hardee's and you're not going to be in the drive-through, you're going to have to stop there and make sure there's no traffic going to or from the car wash so you could exit out of the back of Hardee's or make that loop. When that site was designed, it was designed in such a way where really that's the only access to that. There is a dedicated easement on this site that gives it that access. That said, with that limited access, again, there are limited businesses that could function in a single, single circle, effectively a one-way circle around the building, so to speak, so you could enter and access that property off the Hardee's site. Yes, sir?
Let me ask one question. I may be remembering this wrong. I feel like we've had a conversation at some point about when the, the house that used to sit there, there was a road, I'm looking at the map right now, Vivar Lane or whatever. Is that not an access point? What am I forgetting or not remembering correctly?
It is not an access point. And I can explain to you why. There are two reasons. The first is Vivar Lane extends from City Center Way to Highway 100. However, Vivar Lane is not as wide as a standard one-lane of city traffic. It's less than 11 feet. So we would not be able to install a city-standard single lane along Vivar Lane. It was effectively the width of a car. There was a driveway that actually, before this building was built and before the public shopping center was built, Vivar Lane was actually the driveway from Highway 100 to the home behind me. So if you look at the old photos, that was the driveway that you turned in to get to the house back here. When the shopping center subdivision came in and City Center Way was extended, they just cut across that driveway. So what you're looking at really, Vivar Lane, is simply a driveway from Highway 100 to the property behind us. And that's how Vivar Lane came, came into being. So that's problem number one. The width of it is just a standard driveway width, not a road width. The second concern we have is the ability for Vivar Lane to carry weight of traffic if it were to be improved in such a way that it did not have a negative impact on the closest wall to the, to the detention pond that it adjoins. That detention pond was not constructed in such a way where that wall would be a load-bearing wall to facilitate vehicle traffic in any, in any sustained manner. Because of that, the only real access you have is through the Hardee's parking lot. So with that, you have a limited number of uses, again, that could facilitate the one-way in, one-way out traffic and circulate that traffic on the property. So by that standard, a car wash seems to fit that mold from a traffic, from a traffic question. What brought about this question was, under Main Street Mixed Use, it has a very few limited uses, and those limited uses are on page two of the item that I've handed you. And they're effectively listed as, as section B and C. And I won't go down, I won't go down those. Those are what they are. But a car wash is not included on this list as, in fact, is specifically excluded and included under a commercial general zoning. And a car wash is allowed under commercial general zoning, thus the request to rezone from Main Street Mixed Use to Commercial General. Which brings about the question that we always get of, what would happen in the event that a car wash did not go in that site and another approved use under Commercial General was intended to be used on that site? Given the, the traffic issue that we have, we would have some concern for any other type of business that had cross-traffic on its own footprint, which would create two-directional traffic that would have to navigate through Hardee's parking lot to navigate this site. That, that's a concern for us from a traffic management standpoint. Although they're both private property, it does run into an issue once those vehicles are stacking on City Center Way to turn into Hardee's at the back lot or stacking on City Center Way to allow vehicles to leave the site. So we do have some concerns for that. The second issue that's been brought about are the questions regarding the future use of the town center overlay as it relates to an enhanced community experience if we start talking about developing the, a town center as we've discussed in, in the past. Specifically, we're, we've talked about the property behind us, behind me that the city now owns, developing that into a police department and court facility, which we desperately will need at some point, which would become part of a town center with, with town or city-operated buildings. The second component of that would be a secondary access to Bowie Park. So we would be able to use our property that connects to Bowie Park, develop a secondary access here so that patrons who wanted to visit the park can also park here on... access here so that patrons who wanted to visit the park can also park here on city property or in the shopping center and make that a destination. So you could go visit the park, you could also visit a restaurant, a shop, some other thing, so the park becomes a part of the activity of the shopping center, and the shopping center facilitates greater use of the park. Someone wants to come hike for a day, they could park on the city property, access the park, go hike, ride their bike, whatever they're gonna do, stop, shop at the grocery store, at the restaurant, whatever that thing would be. So you get a more destination experience rather than an alternate access to the park where there's really no destination, other than what you do in the park itself. So that's been the discussion for, for that long-term. With that, the question has become the visual, if this site were to be rezoned, regarding the visual of a car wash, it would effectively be an alternate entrance to Bowie Nature Park and an enhanced use of Bowie Nature Park. The car wash is gonna be a large, a large site, a large structure, obviously, but the question has come, if that, if that happens, what happens to that site as far as our future use for a town center? And if it were to be rezoned and the car wash did not, for whatever reason, be developed, then what would be the secondary uses proposed for that site? And given the fact that commercial general is pretty encompassing, that presents some questions for our traffic management and what would be there. So that, that's a general, not a general, very broad, I guess, discussion of how we arrived at this question, and, and I will be glad to answer any questions you, you have regarding, regarding that thing. But it does bring into question the intent of the city regarding the use of that. I will tell you that we have talked internally among staff about the limited use of the parcel that we're discussing as it relates to the detention pond. Could we go back, or if we could go back and rewind the clock, our proposal would be that the detention pond be placed on this parcel site, or have underground detention, so that the detention pond would be moved forward. We would then fence around it, likely put a sidewalk around it, some park benches or some other thing, and make it a public-use area that happens to be a detention pond. Under the, under the existing codes and under the codes when the detention pond was built, it's not even required to be fenced. So there are some things that would need to be improved, but a proper use for that, if there was going to be one, would be some consideration, if there was a question about rezoning, of attempting to repurpose that property through some acquisition so that that would be your detention pond. You would then fill the detention pond as it currently exists, and that would give you space for two developable lots that could be used commercially. And lastly, I will tell you that even though commercial general and some other things come about, there is a side agreement in place contractually between Hardee's Corporation and CBRE, the development partner and development owner of the Publix Shopping Center. In that agreement, which the city was not privy to, nor would we normally be, but there is an agreement that Hardee's Corporation has the authority to not allow certain fast-food restaurants on that site, which again, limits the city's ability to consider what could or could not go there. Let's take, for instance, the Waffle House. It's no secret that Waffle House has been approved, all their permits have been approved, they've been through this process, and they are looking to build, and soon will build, on the property next door to the MapCo Shopping Center. There was some discussion that Hardee's Corporation had the ability to prevent Waffle House from locating because they are a like-business, a restaurant. Hardee's was able to get around that clause because they don't have a drive-through. Waffle House is in fact not fast food, it's sit-down, so the absence of a drive-through got them out of the prohibition that they be installed at that site. Similarly, given the fact that Hardee's can govern any fast-food restaurant that could go on that site, the access is limited, which limits the use for the circulation of traffic, it seems to make sense to consider the future use of that property either under Main Street Mixed Use or under some other type of acquired usage for the property if the desire of the board is not to consider commercial general, knowing that there are, that's an, that's an open window for other type of business and development.
So do I understand that would be the only piece of property that would be commercial general? Everything else is the, is the Main Street overlay?
Everything else would be what, what it currently is, but there would be no change of that. The only parcel that's under consideration is that parcel. That's the parcel that they're, that they're looking to, to do.
Right.
So that's the only request that we have, is that single parcel.
Right, but is everything else the Main Street overlay?
I would have to go back and pull the map and, and be able to answer that question for you. I didn't research each other one of those sites, I apologize, but this, given this one was under consideration, that was the one that we focused on the question. So with that, I'll be glad to entertain any questions you may have, other than, I'll try to get you that answer, but...
That's okay, that, I was just, that was just, I'm curious.
But that was, that is the substance of the question regarding Main Street Mixed Use versus commercial general and what the board's preferred use or consideration of that parcel may be, so.
So commercial general, if for some reason the car wash did not go in, commercial general could be, for instance, is that the, the fuel lift, the fuel pumping station could also, and there's something about...
Commercial general is, for all intents, for all intents and purposes, commercial general is pretty much anything commercial. Almost anything not residential would be commercial. So once it's commercial, it can be a drugstore, a gas station, a tow facility, a tobacco shop, a loan company, it could be any number of, any number of things.
But, but it wouldn't be heavy industrial, it would be commercial, that's a different classification.
Effectively any retail or similar retail.
Okay. Any questions?
If, if you so desired, could you grant a variance for a permitted use in Main Street Mixed Use instead of rezoning?
There, there is a provision for supplemental, however...
I didn't understand his question.
Could, could you grant a variance for some other use, other than, other than rezoning it to commercial? There is a provision that it can be, that it can be granted supplemental provisions, that would be a general retailer, for example. Supplemental provisions are done at the staff level, and given the importance of this site to the, the city's future, the staff would defer in any, any waiver of that to, to the board. So it, I think it would cloud the issue just a little, although I think, and Mr. Potter could perhaps for this, I know he could better than I can, could you grant some variance of that under some form? Likely so. My concern would be that if you do that once you've opened the door for, for similar, for similar things. Knowing that we're working on the proposed zoning changes and there will be, there'll be a reduction from commercial general to several other zoning types, that's one way to police that, that you could, that you could work and do that, that thing, but under the, under the circumstances we have now, knowing that's probably a 90-day window, my suggestion would be to hold off on the rezoning if that was a pleasure of the board, if the, if the variance was being considered in favor of the zoning classifications, and then allow the board to make a decision on, on a proposed zoning classification. Just protect the board and, and for future use or questions about the site itself. I hope that answered.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if I could, I think the only, I understand we only have the one entrance. That, that one entrance, only having that one entrance just concerns me on several levels. Those three lanes of traffic, if you've ever been to that Hardee's when it's, you know, got a decent amount of cars there, sometimes coming around that corner, people shooting across from the Publix into the, the drive-through or whatever, now you've got two businesses trying to, to go through there at the same time. Also, if I remember correctly, I'm looking at the map now, the Hardee's employees walk out to the main dumpsters throughout the night or throughout the day to empty the trash, as well as, I believe they have an outdoor freezer that's out there. So you've got staff members of the Hardee's, and I know this is, I'm just thinking out loud, walking across, back and forth there, and now you've got cars that the only way to get into that business is through that parking lot, so just having that one entrance just concerns me a little.
For, for informational purposes tonight, so you'll know, this, this item is not up for consideration for a vote tonight, so it will be on an agenda coming, coming to you, and there'll be discussions for that, but given the fact that we had some time work session to discuss all this, I want to make sure you have that information and that, that footprint for how that goes. A site just presents some challenges for, for the owner, for the developer, and, and for the city going forward under the zoning, so as much information as you can have ahead of that vote is helpful. If over the course of the next couple of weeks you run into questions specific to that site, or we can send any other information out, we'll be glad to do so, but the, the best ability to kind of get a feel for what that would be, other than the visual, is to simply go to that entrance and exit of the, of the Hardee's, drive across the back of it, and then turn around on the lot and navigate it back out, and just kind of get an idea of what that, what that traffic feels like, for sure, so.
Okay, anything else?
You had mentioned about possibly the detention pond that's there now being covered in underground, go-to-underground detention, and so how would that affect everything if that were to happen? Would there be an entrance off of City Center Way able to go across there because it's covered up, or how would that work?
So without getting too far in the technical weeds, because as you know, I'm probably not the most technical person to answer that question, but I'll try. The, in, in theory, what you would do is you'd have to, you'd have to obtain that property first, of course, the, the property we're talking about, and then if you were to be able to move the detention pond to the site we're talking about, then we would simply fill, now obviously there will be drainages that would run from that site to the new detention area, but we simply would fill that, that site as it exists that's open, and then you would just fill it to a construction-grade fill, and then you'd have two developable lots that you would access right off City Center Way. So in that case, you would just simply, when you turn on City Center Way, you could make a right and go into Hardee's, or continue on around the corner and make a right into whatever drugstore or any other thing that that comes in. So they would access off of City Center Way, much like the back access, back entrance to Hardee's does.
That just seems like a better option if that were to work, to me.
Yeah, it's safer all the way around. Obviously, there's some mechanics have to go on behind that, but if we could go back and rewind the clock or find a way to forward our way into that, right now we have property that is not developable in the center of town, that seems to be we could enhance that property if we were to negotiate that long-term. I, I think that's the best use. I don't know what the, the dollars and the design look like, but I do think from a long-term perspective, especially if we're talking about the use, the more better use, more, better use of the shopping center, what the shopping center could offer, enhancements to the park and make it more of a town center with a feel, I do think that gives us the best, safest option to use that property and get the highest, the best use out of it.
And just so everyone knows, the, the car wash, self-serve, full-serve, both?
I don't know all of the details, but I believe that it's a, it's a, again, I'll be very generic, I don't want to speak on behalf of the developer and I don't want to speak out of turn, but I believe it's similar to one of the larger car washes where you come in, you do the interior of the cleaning yourself, you're one-way through the traffic, you clean your car, you're one-way through, you drive through the car wash and exit the property out. It's not a spray-won car wash, it is a standalone drive-through car wash with an exterior location to clean the inside of your vehicle either before or after you, you drive through the wash itself.
But more of a self-service and not like...
No, that I don't know. My guess is it would be staffed at, at some point, but I don't, I don't know, I apologize, I don't know the specific business model for how that would function.
It just, in my mind, it would be different if it were one versus the other as far as the traffic flow, but...
Yeah, I couldn't answer that.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay, I just, you know, just...
No, listeners worthy to think, there's, there's, that's an important site, and I'm not suggesting one, one or the other, but I just know that since we had the discussions, really from when Hardee's first came in through today, having this, once there's substantial interest in developing the site, we realize the weaknesses of it, that's obviously a concern, that at some point the city could participate in, help remedy possibly.
Entrance and exit to Waffle House, different than what this is?
Yes.
But is there connectivity from MapCo to Waffle House?
I believe there's connectivity on the backside into the Publix parking lot, not through MapCo.
Gotcha, so Publix parking lot to Waffle House?
And entrance off of the, the Publix entrance. So you would effectively have two sites. When you turn off of 100 into Publix, if you don't use the traffic signal intersection, if you use the next intersection, if you turn off of 100 into Publix or the wooded areas to your left, the Waffle House will be on your right, there's a stub street that turns into the Waffle House. So you'd have access from the, from the Publix drive, so to speak, and then to the backside of, of there. So there, it's completely not the same as, as what you would have at this, at this site, unfortunately, as, as it may be.
So then again, if, if there was some type of, you know, I don't know, restaurant or something that could be built there, if they decided to move the detention and cover that up and have the entrance and exit right there, it'd probably be a better option.
If all of that worked, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
So just, just so I'm clear, I don't want to belabor, but to your point about filling in the detention pond, if we did that or wanted to do that, we would have to purchase that piece of property? Is that, so is that, is it two separate pieces of property right now, or is it just one piece?
I believe they're a total of three. The city owns none of them.
Okay, so, so if we wanted to potentially fill in that and move forward, we'd have to basically buy that, that portion of the property, I'm assuming, maybe, right?
Yes, sir, we, the city, yes, sir.
Okay, and then once we own that, I'm, I'm guessing that the, the contract between Hardee's and the Publix goes out the door as far as, or no?
No, sir, no, sir. The, those deed restrictions go with the properties. Now, I have not seen the deed restrictions for the property where the detention pond currently sits. My guess is that there would be no provision by Hardee's to prevent by deed a fast-food restaurant on a site that was constructed as a detention pond, so there may be some opportunity for that site, but I would have to, I'd have to do a little digger deeping, dig a little deeper to understand what all those obligations are, whether or not they could be unwound, or whether the city has a voice in unwinding those.
And if the city did do that, would, would they, and I know we're jumping way ahead, but would the city's plan be to sell that property or use that property for what you're talking about, a, a public square-type place or whatever?
Again, if, if the risk had just been purely speculative, my, my suggestion, if the city were to engage in that, would be to resell those properties for commercial development.
Commercial or Main Street Mixed Use?
Retail development that meets the current or future proposed zoning.
And I wasn't suggesting the city purchased this. I was suggesting if a restaurant or other business wanted to be there, they would be responsible for the detention.
No, agree, agree, this, there's a lot of unwinding of agreements that would have to take place, but it gets us back to the lack of usability of the existing open lot between Hardee's and First Bank and the requirements that are imposed on it.
And I wasn't, I wasn't implying that at all, I apologize if it sounded like I was. I was just trying to understand who exactly owned, if it was the city that already owned it or not, so that, that was all I...
The, the property the city has leased is directly behind First Bank, correct?
Between, between the bank and City Hall, yes.
Okay.
And, and I can give, if that closes the discussion on the other, I can give you a quick update on our, on our plans for that, or what we're gonna propose to the BOC on that site.
Any more questions about, okay.
As it relates to that side, and we'll take a quick break unless there are any other questions on any other topic, I'll be glad to, to address. As you're, as you may be aware, and the Publix are aware, we've had an influx recently of food trucks that have visited Fairview. They've been at various locations for various things, and, and we welcome those. We also want to try and regulate them a little bit for a couple of reasons, specifically traffic. If you look at some of the locations where they've been, they'll come and set up, and it creates a traffic issue, number one, within the location where they are, particularly if they're parked in open, in parking spaces, designed, they're, it's the old Grace Works location, I forget the name of that now, but I know for a while there were a food truck or two that would park in those parking spaces, that causes us two issues. First, the traffic as it relates to Highway 100... First, the traffic as it relates to Highway 100 traffic navigating that area first, and secondly, if we have minimum parking approved for those sites and a food truck takes up those parking spaces, then that's a minimum parking space violation use of, of that parking space, which we clearly don't need to do. With that also, we want to make sure that we are permitting those so the city can understand and guarantee the safety, the safe function operation, fire codes, and everything else that would be associated with a food truck or food truck court. So with that, we've looked at a way to enhance that to, to hopefully encourage food trucks or things similar to visit the city because we have gotten a lot of positive response on that. So what we're looking to do, and we'll present to the board, a plan generally for a concept of that as it relates to the property across the street. We've done some work on just a general overview of that, and we believe that we can take the VAR lane, the one lane that we have, move it in just a little bit, gravel it in such a way that in the, all this meets city code, we followed up on the code to make sure we're within our own regulations, but enhance that drive so that you could come in, use a portion of that drive to access the property between the city and First Bank. We would then install a circular drive on, on that site so food trucks can come in, park in that circle, within the circle of the area, the city would install some seating, likely some picnic tables, some things such as that, permit through an ordinance, an, an ordinance so that we would be able to understand who comes in, the, the food truck would have to get permitted, there will be inspections, other things. We will likely have a minimal cost permit to that food truck. That would be the location for food trucks to set up within the city limits of the city of Fairview, have them on our corridor, put them there, enhance the striped parking along City Center Way and City Center Boulevard so that people who wanted to visit the food trucks could park along our boulevards, park in City Hall parking lot, park downstairs, walk across the street to the food trucks, enjoy whatever they're going to enjoy there, have a seated area for that, and then be able to leave and still, and still use the area that we want to do. If, if we're going to have food trucks here, we think we should concentrate them, permit them, and have a better management of the traffic that's imposed by, by the food trucks system. So Kevin's done some work on that design. We have to do a little bit of work as far as drainage to make sure that we don't have any runoff that will make its way into the detention pond out front that's not ours. We think we can mitigate that fairly easily with some impervious surface or pervious surfaces so that the, the rainwater, stormwater doesn't get there, obviously collect trash, that sort of thing, invite people to use that area. Once we do that, we can gauge that participation and that will help us better plan for food truck, food truck ordinances, and maybe some restaurant recruitment as we go forward in the process, so.
Does that mean we paint the stripes out here in our parking places?
I'm sorry, Mayor, you broke up just a little bit, but yes, we, yes, we would. We would consider your request, I think quite favorably of re-stripping.
It's been at least a four-year request.
Yes. So that's an update, just where we have on that site as well, while, while we had the subject there. We're working behind the scenes to try and make that a usable space as well and see what our future looks like for some of those businesses and patrons.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got one, Mayor. So what other cities in the surrounding area have those ordinances for food trucks?
Everyone.
Everybody except for Fairview.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Brentwood is scary.
Yeah, I, you know, I saw Chick-fil-A here the other day, really liked that, you know, for sure, but we want to make sure that the community is safe as well.
Yeah. I, I will, I will report to you separate from that, that Chick-fil-A reported back to us that Fairview was the only location that they visited where they ran out twice in the same day.
Really?
They are looking to come back for another set of those, but of all the places they go, they, they ran out twice. So that speaks volumes for, for Fairview and our community, and we look forward to them being back out, so.
Commissioner Dawson, most of these, most municipalities have ordinances regulating them and putting permits on them. City of Dixon prohibits them outright. Some, some cities prohibit them, but.
And Brentwood did until just a couple of years ago.
The tax base for them, the statute is at their home location, so the city, you know, typically charges some kind of permit fee and that's how the city can make revenue in some way.
So there'd be no conflict with Chick-fil-A or other food trucks with Hardee's?
That's a wholly separate.
Okay.
That's a wholly separate location, there's no, there's no governance on that at all. One thing that will, as we get into that discussion for that, well, having them in a central location helps as far as the ordinance for where that goes. It also gives us ability to help prevent a like food truck from causing an imposition on a like business. So what, what you don't want to have is a successful restaurant in a shopping center and then have a food truck that serves the same type of fare show up in that, in that parking lot. Obviously, these restaurants typically are tenants of a larger, of a larger shop and the larger shops or property owners, one is going to give the permit, permission. For us, we're trying to centralize that, see what the community feedback on that is, and hopefully use that as a retail recruitment tool in addition to our ability to just maintain safety of the, of the food trucks themselves and participation.
Anything else?
Do we know when that proposal's going to be ready for the BOC?
We are working right now on finalizing some numbers for the work to be done on the site. We think it's about $15,000. As soon as we can put those numbers together and find an ordinance to mimic, as you all know, as it comes to ordinances and resolutions, I'm a big fan of plagiarism. So once we find one that works, that we can enact that fits our needs or can be modified to fit our needs, then we'll work on that. But that's pretty high on our priority list right now to make sure we get that going.
Will it have power and water?
Initially, no. Now, there is, there is water and sewer available at the site. We weren't real sure the participation of that or what those needs would be. Now, if it gets to where we're going to provide power, we do have generator power that we could provide if we needed to, but rather than make the initial investment, we, we wanted to wait on the participation of that. But I can tell you, because of the house that was there, the water and sewer infrastructure is still there. If we need to install power, we would just simply have a power, power pole installed and meter that power from that way. So it's, it's there, two of the three exist, but without knowing what the full participation would be, we were hesitant to make that investment until we know for sure that it would be successful. But yes, our, our hope would be that we wouldn't need that.
Thank you. Then we will come back at exactly seven o'clock, so we have a break, and I think we're actually running on time for a change.
We are, and Mayor, we had a meeting just briefly for after this meeting. If we could just pick up, if we could have that meeting now, then we will be able to eliminate the need to stay after, so.
Perfect. That'd be great.
Thank you.
What's breaking up?
I was on.
I'm sorry.
I can't.
Oh, flashing low battery. It was.
What kind of batteries?
Hell, yeah. I'm thinking of those.
I'll be right back. Charlie.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Um.
So, how do you? I'm not going to ask. Now, where? Oh, that's okay. Okay. Yeah. I'm, I'm obviously. I'm all over here. That shouldn't have happened. I have lots more than mine. I want to. You got it. Already good. All of them. Right, getting down. We're. I didn't see this before, sir. I don't want to see him. I, I saw one. Actually, I would like, I would like to point out that we like to be together. I was, he was talking about, he was talking about. I don't know. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. Yeah.
Ms. Johnson, will you call the row?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Butler?
Present.
Commissioner Dawson?
Present.
Commissioner Lucas?
Present.
Mayor Rainey?
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. We're called to order. If you will stand for the prayer and pledge, Commissioner Lucas.
If you'd bow your heads. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for this opportunity we have together, together as a community, and make decisions. We pray that you guide our decisions and help us make the best decisions for this community that we all love so much. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of the agenda and executive session announcements. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Johnson, will you call the row?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item five, public hearings. We have none tonight. Item six, citizen comments. Ms. Johnson, do we have anyone?
Yes, ma'am. We have five citizens tonight. The first one is Tim Rocco.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rocco? And remember, you have three minutes. If you'll state your name and your address? No?
I get to say my name or something? Thank you. Tim Rocco. I'm a resident of the Cox Run subdivision.
Your address?
Seventy-three fifteen Cox Run Court.
Okay. Thank you.
Fairview welcomes you. We call it home. That's what the sign as you entered town used to say. Now, more than ever, have we been asked to school, work, and stay at home? We've been given a chance to reflect on how important our home is. Home is a place where we live, raise our families. It's a place where we gather and build memories. Home is a safe place where we can be ourselves and seek refuge from the sometimes unforgiving world outside. Our homes are located in neighborhoods, communities where neighbors were motivated to invest in the quiet and peaceful environment that surrounds them. The proposed development for the neighborhood of Bowie would clearly change the character of our neighborhood, disrupt our homes, interfere with our daily routines, and potentially threaten the safety of our neighbors and their property. As elected officials, we're asking that you consider the impact of whatever actions you decide to take tonight. This development was brought before the planning commission in November of last year and has been given reasonable time for consideration. Please take into account all the information that was presented here tonight and the information that you've been given from the citizens of, or the residents of Cox Run subdivision. We encourage you to vote your conscience. Finally, please reflect on the expectation one has when returning from the stress and frustrations that we're often faced with outside of our home. Our hope is we can continue to look forward to returning to the safe place where we can be ourselves, relax, take a break from the noise and confusion of the world outside. You know the place. Like the sign used to say, "We call it home." Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Diane Miller.
Good evening. My name is Diane Miller, and I live on seventy-four fifteen Master Shane Road. And tonight, I just want to share a moment of my personal story. I'm part of the Cox Run subdivision. And as I mentioned, my name is Diane Miller, and I am one of the Cox Run residents experiencing stormwater drainage issues. Again, I want to mention that this is a current, existing, and ongoing issue. I wanted to take a moment to share my personal story to hopefully put into perspective what my family has endured over the last eight to nine months. On July fifth, I received terrible news that my father lost his battle to COVID-19 and passed away. Exactly one week later, we woke up to three feet of water in our finished basement and garage. A little over a month later, I suffered a stroke. On November tenth, I had a heart procedure. I'm a wife and a working mom. I have a three-year-old and a five-year-old. If you would have seen the presentation of the presentation that we sent you, those are my kids in that presentation. I share this with you all because I think it's important for you to understand that we are a very real family experiencing some very real hardships. And I wholeheartedly believe you hold the power to assist in resolving one of those hardships, or at least preventing it from getting worse. We had recently finished the basement as a bonus room so my husband could store his guitars, other musical equipment, and sports memorabilia collection. We also use this area for storage. We often spent time as a family down there playing and building memories with our kids. We worked hard to buy our first family home, and this was our first family home. We love the character of Fairview and this neighborhood. We just wanted to have a safe, warm home to raise our family. I want you for a second to imagine what it might feel like if this happened to you, to wake up to complete destruction. I was in complete disbelief. It took several minutes to digest what we were seeing. My kids' toys floating around, my husband's autographed Green Bay Packer helmet in muddy water, and a wall that separated our garage from this finished basement just pushed in completely. My husband's guitars, his musical equipment, just submerged in complete darkness. To further explain the impact, my minivan that was parked approximately six feet outside of the garage was deemed a total loss due to flooding damage from this event. Something you worked so hard to accomplish just gone. It was simply gut-wrenching. Some of these things, while expensive, are material items that can be replaced, but a lot were irreplaceable. I came across a wedding memento with signatures and messages from our guests, but what hit the hardest was to see my recently deceased father's signature on that photo, and it was completely ruined. I can't get that back.
Ms. Miller, I'm, I'm sorry. Your, your three minutes are up. I do apologize, and...
I just hope that you take this and do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiffany Wilson Mobley?
Thank you, Diane, for sharing that. Good evening to all of you here and all at home. We hope your families are well, safe, and happy. My name is Tiffany Wilson Mobley. My address is... address is seventy-three oh-three Cox Run Court, and I would like to present the following comments from my three minutes. Commissioners, I can't tell you how many times people have said to me, "Thank you for speaking out about this," but then follow with, "But just so you know," they're going to do what they want to do. That's what always happens. I'm new to being involved in our city's board meetings and came into this with a full heart of trust, but I can imagine you feel the same way I do when I heard this. I don't want our citizens to feel that way. I've been grateful for these meetings and for conversations with several of you. However, at this point in the process, we're reaching out to you to say no to this rezoning request from low to medium density with an overlay for all the reasons that we've continued to share, tons of research we've put into this, put into the PowerPoint that we were hoping to share tonight, but we were not allowed to. We know our town is growing, and that is fine. However, the way our town grows is our decision. The current zoning is compatible with many neighborhoods in Williamson County that surround parks. This particular piece of land is already zoned for development. It's zoned for low density, and it will mitigate the area needed to handle stormwater runoff and keep the traffic at a reasonable level and still bring in money. Commissioners, we ask you to develop that land in a way that's compatible with the Fairview Forward to 2040 Plan. That plan surveyed citizens in our town and showed overwhelmingly they don't want developments going in next to the park. Our citizens have made their voices known through a petition, which I know you all have. It's twenty-three hundred signatures now. We have had numerous emails and talks with you, and again, a huge PowerPoint presentation that we put together that talks about the different areas that we're so concerned with, including the one that Diane brought up. Now, the developers tonight have talked about their plan, and I want to just say, there's a lot of probablys on there. One of the big concerns is, if you look at this plan and actually look at the piece that we had, that drainage is still coming down to us and unimpeded into the park. I really hope people understand that. We have not been brought into the discussion with the developers, and in fact, that's not our place. We need you to put us first. We need you to protect us before an applicant pushes through a rezoning for a land for medium zone that basically packs together a hundred and sixty houses-
I'm sorry.
-on about eighty acres.
I'm sorry.
I have one more point to make, please.
I'm sorry. Your three minutes-
Tonight, this is about you voting for us. Mr. Butler explained that you are up there for us. You are representing us.
Your time's up.
Okay, thank you so much. We hope that you will, please.
You continue speaking. You only asked to leave, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The proposed, oh, my name is Jan White, and my address is seven-three-three-five Cox Run Drive.
Thank you.
The proposed Grove's property is not compatible with our existing neighborhood. The definition of compatible is able to exist, to occur together without conflict. Medium-density zoning, such as the proposed hundred and sixty-eight homes, will more than triple the traffic in our neighborhood, and will also create several types of conflict as well, such as it will make our neighborhoods unsafe. Furthermore, once one passes the internal intersection with Master Shane Drive, which is also the sole access to the remaining twenty-eight homes in our subdivision, the balance of Cox Run Drive continually, currently serves only thirteen houses plus a negligible overflow from Mangrum Drive to the east. Children play in our streets. We exercise, walk dogs, and socialize with our streets, on our streets. This is part of our neighborhood's charm and has a direct effect on our property values. The proposed Graves' property will also infringe upon the Americans with Disability Act, or ADA. ADA requires that sidewalks be accessible, which means there must be a minimum clearing to get around any obstruction. One of our residents of Cox Run Drive has a child who uses a wheelchair. They enjoy Cox Run neighborhood streets as they are safe and calm and give their daughter a much-needed community outlet. I'm going to skip down because I'm afraid I'm going to run out of minutes here. We did not, we completed a traffic monitoring on February 8th. We did not estimate the traffic numbers. We actually monitored the traffic in and out of the main entrance on Cox Run Drive for three hours in the morning and four hours mid to late afternoon, and determined a hundred and seventy-eight vehicles during this time period. Now, we use the proposed number of houses being one-hundred-and-sixty-eight, and we have an estimated number of seven-hundred and sixty-five vehicles traveling on Cox Run Drive per day after this development is completed. That's seven-sixty-five vehicles traveling on Cox Run Drive per day, not an estimated one-hundred-and-eighty, as we heard earlier tonight. We consider this traffic monitoring to serve as an established benchmark in our neighborhood. In closing, Cox Run Drive was never designed or intended to serve this much traffic.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mackie White?
My name is Mackie White, seven-three-three-five Cox Run Drive. Aside from this eventual traffic, residual, excuse me, residential traffic, can the planning commission imagine the impact of excavation equipment, bulldozers, vacos, concrete trucks, and material deliveries, hundreds of subcontractors on Cox Run Drive with neighbors and children as part of the landscape? We cannot. Cox Run Drive was never designed to handle this load, excuse me, capacity, nor the frequency of trips. The repetitive heavy construction will break down and destroy the pavement and quite possibly some underlying utilities on Cox Run Drive. Worse, it will make it unsafe and literally uninhabitable for neighborhood interaction where it's not allowing developers' convenience to become our nightmare. Cox Run Drive will become a thoroughfare to another neighborhood. Developers' Grove's property chose to extend Cox Run Drive into phases one, two, and three would multiply traffic to the point where Cox Run Drive would be a through road for an aggregate of a hundred and forty-one lots. The increase in traffic would prevent us from enjoying our street as we do now. It would make Cox Run Drive a thoroughfare in Cox Run subdivision, the only drive passing through to another neighborhood in Fairview. Is this incompatible and possibly dangerous present the City of Fairview wants to set during this time of growth? These types of drive-through neighborhoods can lead to overdevelopment and dangerous traffic issues. That is not what the public wants when surveyed as stated in the 2040 Plan. This level of traffic increase will make our neighborhood dangerous and confined, and does not preserve, but instead threatens our neighborhood's safety, security, enjoyment, character, and privacy. Thank you.
Thank you. But everyone, Ms. Johnson? Thank you. Item seven, public announcements. I understand that Vice Mayor Anderson is on the board for the Arts Council, so I'm going to let her present the proclamation to the Arts Council representatives, if they're here. Down on the floor.
Come down.
Please, sir. Down the floor. We're glad you're here. Thank you for coming.
This good?
You'll have to sit in the chair so we can hear you.
Oh, well, I think everybody can hear me. I have a projecting voice. As a member of the Board of the Arts Council, I'm so excited to read the City of Fairview's proclamation. Honoring the Fairview Arts Council. The Fairview Art Council was established in 2018 by a handful of people who desire to connect and collaborate with other local creatives. And since its inception, the council has grown into a community of more than five-hundred people across various creative disciplines who share a creative spirit and value the positive differences, the art, positive difference the arts can make in a community, and Fairview Arts Council is committed to development, developing more than opportunities of community education, local art exhibits, musicians showcases, public art projects, open art events, and creative conversation. And the year 2020 brought about a set of unique challenges, and the Fairview Art Council shifted their focus to finding novel ways to stay connected to one another while improving the community's spirit with new creative incentives. And on Saturday, November fourteenth, 2020, more than sixty members of the community helped paint a large mural on the building at seventeen-twelve Fairview Boulevard, designed by local artists Michelle Mirakami and Erin Graham. And the City of Fairview and the city community was honored by the efforts of the Fairview Arts Council to showcase the creative wildlife and natural beauty central to the heart of Fairview. And as a representative of the mayor of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, I do hereby honor Fairview Art Council and their contributions to the appreciation and enjoyment of the arts and the beautification of our great city.
Item eight, staff comments and monthly reports. Mr. Collins?
Mayor, three items for you tonight. First, you may recall that some time ago, we had installed monthly report from police departments, fire departments, various reports for those things, and obviously COVID and some other things slowed us down for those. Just to report back to you that our April 1st meeting, we will pick back up on those reports in an alternating fashion, where we'll have a couple of departments at each meeting, so we'll be able to get that information back out. I appreciate everybody's help with that. Just we, given these staffing challenges and reporting challenges that we've had, that's been a bit difficult for everyone, but we think we can move forward with that in a healthy and safe manner and get that information out to you. Secondly, a reminder to everyone that we typically meet on the first and third Thursday of each month. However, this month, the March eighteen meeting has been moved to March twenty-fifth, so there will not be a BOC meeting two weeks from tonight. The next BOC meeting will be three weeks from tonight, March twenty-fifth and not the eighteenth. And third, lastly, you may notice at the back of the room, there's a stack of chairs, and there's another stack outside as you exit City Hall or enter City Hall. We're in the process of making some improvements to this room. There's going to be repainting and refreshing of the room. We'll have chairs set up where the pews are now. The carpet's going to be replaced. We're going to remove this item you have before you with a cleaner version for the BOC and presenters to be able to use and make this more of a usable space, not only for staff, but for community, and more functional at your meetings. So as we get into those discussions, we'll have a brief presentation of what that will look like at the April 1st meeting as well. Our anticipation is that we will do this during the month of April and have the room fully functioning at the end of that month. So that's all I have for you tonight. Be glad to take any questions on those or any other items that you have. Thank you.
Any questions? Item nine, consent agenda, a motion to approve. Is there one?
Move to approve.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the row?
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item ten, old business, there is none. Item eleven, new business, certificate of compliance renewal for Good Time Spirits and Wines, twenty-two seventy-six Fairview Boulevard, owner Jeff McCord. Do we have any information on that?
Mayor, these just simply have to be renewed every other year by law through the Tennessee ABC?
No violations.
That's all this is, ma'am?
No violations.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item B, first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty dash twenty-nine, Vice Mayor?
Item B, first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty dash twenty-nine, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning one-twenty-four-point-forty-three acres of property consisting of map zero forty-three, parcel zero-zero-six-point-zero-zero, and map zero forty-three, parcel zero-twenty-six-point-zero-zero, located at Wayne's Lane and Mangrum Lane, from RS forty, single-family low-density residential, to R twenty, single-family medium-density residential, planned overlay development, and approving a master development plan. Owners Cory Groves and Johnny Groves.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss, Mayor.
Okay.
I appreciate all of the feedback that we've gotten from the citizens of Cox Run, all of the feedback that we've gotten from the citizens of Fairview. This motion will basically take this to public comment. The next step, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The next step would be a public hearing and a second reading to be both conducted at the same meeting.
Okay, great. I look forward to that public hearing. That is the form truly where Cox Run, the citizens of the City of Fairview, are able to discuss this subdivision. That is the form where we can really get into the meat of things. So I look forward to that, both sides coming, telling their story, and bringing that full value to the commission. That's all I have.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I just have some comments, just some feedback or discussion. There's three things that I'm really stuck on. The first would be the ten thousand square foot lot size. I guess just in my head, I have associated the ten thousand square foot lot size with a higher-density project, and so with the setbacks were increased today on the front, but the smaller setbacks, the smaller lot, just makes me have a feel or a thought of a smaller density, and in my opinion, doesn't really meet the intent of the medium-density of the area of the park. We go through an R twenty to get to it. I think I expressed that to you before, Mr. Allen. The next one, are the lots on the southwest side that directly come up to the park. Paritas says one of the best ways to create a buffer from a natural park to a neighborhood is with the road. We have a road there. If it's possible to eliminate those, to have a greenway included or something to try and, then we don't have any pressures of a backyard facing into that park area, facing that perimeter trail. There's no question of where the buffer starts, where the park goes or ends, and... Those are the notes I had, just for feedback.
That all, Mr. Butler?
Ma'am, sorry.
Okay. You're good. Any other discussion?
Mayor? I know that the group at Cox Run have put together a great presentation that we're all very interested in hearing, so I'm looking forward to that during the public hearing if this moves forward, and I just appreciate the developers as well coming and, you know, being able to-
And I just appreciate the developers as well coming and, you know, being able to work with, you know, work with the community and try to, you know, if this moves forward, bring a, you know, better development. And I hope that we can just, you know, work together on this. Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Item twelve, communications from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Butler?
Yes, ma'am. I will say, just feedback to the citizens, thank you for everybody coming. I do also look forward to the public hearing, having some more discussion. We looked at your presentation, and hopefully some, you know, the feedback we gave. It's just my opinion, but thank you for everybody coming tonight.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yeah, I do have one thing to share. So we often, as commissioners and city representatives, get telephone calls, and often it's when we have issues or problems. I received a telephone call this week. An individual had a storm drain cover that was broken in his subdivision. He sent an email to Micah Sullivan in his crew, and that same day, he got an email back and said that they had recognized that that storm drain cover was broken and that was on order, and sent that feedback that same day. So, Micah, and your crew, thank you so much. It's important that we get back in a timely matter, back to our citizens when they do have issues, and, Mike, I just appreciate you doing that in that quick fashion. So wanted to give you a shout. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucas? Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
And I have nothing. At that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And we're adjourned. Thank you.